...way we can get through some of the lead items that we have prior to all the ordinances that we have to read, so I'm going to go ahead and call the meeting to order. It's Tuesday, March 1st, 2016. This is the North Miami Planning Commission meeting for this date. Meeting is called to order. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Secretary, may we have a roll call, please?
Chair Kevin Seifert.
He is on his way.
Vice Chair Charles Ernst.
Present.
Commissioner Kenny Each.
Excused absence, I believe. That's correct.
Commissioner Jason James.
I don't know. He may be on his way.
Commissioner Emmanuel Gentey.
Also on his way, I believe.
Yes.
Mr. Gentey is a police officer. I believe he had a call.
Okay.
So he's on his way. If that being the case and he can't get him, that would be an excused absence.
Okay, no problem.
Continue.
Commissioner Peggy Bulley.
Present.
Commissioner Bob Pichon.
Present.
Commissioner Michael McDermid.
Present.
We have quorum.
Thank you very much, Madam Secretary. At this point, I will call for approval of minutes to the last meeting. Anyone have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
So moved. All right. Mr. McNurbin moves to approve. Have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Pichon. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Staff, is there any communications that you need to present to us at this time?
No communications or amendments to the agenda, Mr. Chair.
All right. I note on the public hearings, line item PC-0116 has been deleted. Do we need to show that on record as not being addressed tonight? Is it necessary? Counselor?
Well, it is on record that it's deleted, so you may proceed with item PC-20-15.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
PC-20-15, a resolution of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida approving the vacation abandonment and sale of portion of a city-owned right-of-way for Northwest 13th Avenue, measuring 114 feet long and 60 feet wide, lying immediately north of Northwest 119th Street between blocks 17 and 32 of Sunkist Grove. According to the plat thereof, as recorded in plat book and page 49 of the public records of Miami-Dade County, further authorizing the interim city manager to negotiate the sale of the subject portion of the right-of-way in accordance with Chapter 29, Article 3, Division 9 of the City of North Miami Code of Ordinances, Land Development Regulations, and to take all necessary steps to effective the conveyance, providing for the effective date, and for all other purposes. May we have staff report, please?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. For the record, Tanya Wilson-Tesor, Planning Director at Community Planning and Development, I read the staff recommendation into the record. Staff is recommending the adoption of the attached resolution approving the vacation, abandonment, closure, and subsequent sale of a portion of right-of-way for Northwest 13th Avenue, measuring 114 feet long and 60 feet wide, and lying immediately north of Northwest 119th Street between blocks 17 and 32 of Sunkist Grove, according to the plat thereof, as recorded in plat book 8, page 49 of the public records of Miami-Dade County, and to forward said request to the mayor and council for final consideration.
If I can interrupt you there, I'm going to go ahead and turn proceedings back over to Mr. Seifert, who is now present as chairman of the board. If I may.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. You're ducking out early, Charlie, I see.
Yes, indeed.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you for your patience. All right, you may proceed.
The subject request before use for abandonment of the segment of 13th Avenue as depicted in the attached diagram in the staff report, just to provide some background information, that segment itself was closed by the city back in the 1990s. Since then, it's become a dead zone. It's unused. It has no public purpose, and unfortunately, it's often the location for illegal dumping. The request by the applicant was made because the applicant owns lot 1 and 2 that are but either side of that subject segment. The request, if approved, the applicant seeks to consolidate both lots to provide for one development site to allow for the expansion of the church property. As required by city regulations, the subject area itself has been appraised. Based on the appraisal, we recognize that there are two values that have been recommended for the subject area. One value totals $62,000, the other $155,000. Based on city regulations, the city is required to pick the higher of the two, in this case the $62,000, for the value of that segment. The applicant has agreed to compensate the city for the value of that segment if this item is actually approved. I will also say, in terms of the right-of-way itself, it's locally owned by the city of North Miami. Based on the analysis that was done, staff believes that this applicant meets the criteria of the code as outlined in Article 3, Division 9 of the Land Development Regulations, and staff is recommending approval at this time, subject to the conditions, a real condition into the record, that deed transfer occur after a final conveyance of the property, that there's a deed transfer from the city to the applicant, that a unit of title be submitted within 45 days of approval, and that any easements that need to remain on site for utility companies that actually be recognized. We have the applicant or the agent of the applicant that's actually here that wishes to speak on the item at this time.
All right. The applicant can proceed.
My name is Unique Murphy. I'm the general contractor that has been assisting Pilgrim Evangelical Church.
Do we have the audio on that? Is that microphone turned on?
Yeah.
Green light is on?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Can you not hear me?
I wasn't sure it was on. Didn't sound like it.
Is that a little better?
Yes, much better.
Uh-huh. I first want to apologize for not being present last month during the meeting. I apologize because I'm sure that the time that you all put in is invaluable, so I don't want that to be a bad reflection on the decision that's made, hopefully with an approval by the council. So I wanted to start off with that. Please accept my apologies.
Accepted.
The second thing is that we, as general contractors, have been with Pilgrim from the beginning of their fire. I don't know if you have a history of the church, but the church had suffered a major fire as a result of children playing with fireworks on the roof, and I happened to see the church on the news being interviewed, I believe by Channel 7, and the demeanor, the demeanor and the, I don't know how to explain it, the stillness of the pastor who was standing to my left was just amazing to me, that my husband and I decided that we would do whatever is necessary to help the church at no charge to them. I hope that the city could do the same. It's a joke. But we're here now because there is, as was stated, a section, actually it's a driveway that's a dead end. It leads to nothing. It's roped off. It really serves no purpose to the city, to my understanding, and I guess that would be the reason why we're now before you with the hopes that an application for the property to be purchased by Pilgrim so that they can continue with an expansion of their current building to, well, to be able to hold larger services and to become a better means of service to the community. Do you have any questions for me?
Not right at this time.
Okay.
Perhaps later. If there's no further statement from the applicant, we'll open the public hearing. Anyone wishing to speak to this item is invited to step forward. Public hearing is open. Last call for volunteers to step forward. I see no hands coming up. I hear no thundering heard, nor rising cloud of dust, and therefore this public hearing is closed. Any member of the commission have a question for the presenter?
I've got a question or two. So currently, on one side of the land is a parking lot.
Correct.
And the other side is where the...
Actual structure is.
Structure is now.
Uh-huh.
So when you, I've actually had my car washed on the property while I was out there looking at it. So you're going to expand over to the three properties? Is that kind of the plan?
Yes.
Okay. Is there some, is there something that needs to be done with the residents on the Sunkist side?
No.
So you're not, your setbacks and everything with your construction is...
Totally within bounds.
Good neighbors with those guys?
Yes.
Okay. That's really all I was curious about.
Okay.
Question. Are you expanding the church or the parking lot, or both?
The church and the parking lot, I guess in some respect would be expanded, but it would really be relocated further towards the west to accommodate for the new structure.
Okay, and as far as the services that the church will offer to the community, would part of the services be geared towards the youth?
Oh, absolutely. They currently have a youth ministry in progress, but because of the space limitations, it makes it a little difficult for them to go as full, or full force as they would like to.
Okay.
But they definitely have like a community outreach with regards to children now, to the youth. Reverend James, or Pastor James also mentors up and coming pastors to become youth leaders within the community, so that's something that they would definitely entertain.
And has the fire affected the actual structure of the church?
Well, one portion of the church was completely destroyed as a result of the fire. Sorry to hear that. The one portion of the church had been completely destroyed as a result of the fire. That's been cleaned up, but it's a space that they would love to take advantage of using in terms of the expansion.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead.
There's a picture enclosed. Is that a portion of what was remained? I saw a picture where it looked like there was some sort of a structure. I know at one point you all were doing your services out of a tent.
Right.
Until you got back up.
They were.
Got your legs. Is that structure that's there now, do you have plans to tear that down in order to accommodate a larger...
It'll actually be an addition.
It'll be an addition?
Yeah.
And you plan on it fitting in with it, or being a separate structure, or how?
It'll, no, it'll actually be an addition to the existing structure, opening that wall to expand.
For anyone who's lived in North Miami for some time or stayed residence, there used to be the old Bottle Cap Inn, a pizza restaurant.
Yeah.
And I remember when the fire happened, it was a very tragic event. And the parking lot was separated by 13th Avenue. One time, 13th Avenue, which is wanting to be abandoned, was blocked off, so that road became useless. So what you're asking for is really something that is, you know, very acceptable, I think, to most of us, that we have banned that property since that street is permanently closed off.
Right.
So 13th Avenue is not open, I believe. It has a barrier there?
Yeah.
It's a barrier.
There is a barrier there. It's not an open street.
Wow, Councilman Galvin, you're a wealth of knowledge over there, huh?
Ernst.
Ernest? Oh, okay. Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Charles Ernest. Okay, well, you still are a wealth of knowledge, regardless of who you are.
It's a matter of, are you planning to use, I'm sorry, counselor? I was going to say that in all practicality, the right-of-way seems to become a right-of-way because it's been sealed off, and it only serves as a liability if the city is to maintain it. So the city, you know, would welcome the incorporation of this portion into their property.
That's great.
All right. Thank you.
Yes, Mike.
With all being said, I'd like to move that we approve the item.
All right, we have a motion from Mr. McDermid for approval. Do we have a second?
I second.
All right, before we take a vote on that, I thank you, Mr. Ernst, for sharing your age with us. I must say, I remember as a much younger resident of this community, going to the Bottle Cap Inn quite often for pizza and dinner. Those in my more youthful days, that was a wonderful place to go, and it was a very interesting restaurant in that they had all that wall covered entirely in bottle caps.
Oh, really?
Absolutely, is how it got its name.
Yeah.
It's really quite amazing. The Bottle Cap Inn was, in essence, in my personal opinion, an historical property in the city, and it's just sad that it no longer exists in its current form. But having said that, the chair would certainly support the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Good night. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. All right, God bless you.
Hopefully we'll see you at the opening of the church.
Just share with us. Come by and give us some flowers or something.
Oh, absolutely.
All right, God bless you.
By the way, the final review will be conducted by the city council. You'll be notified. So the final decision is still yet to come on this.
Yes, bear in mind, this is only a recommendation. You do need to appear before the city council.
March 22nd.
Just to be on the safe side.
Too late, no.
The numbers were based off the appraisal that was received. However, I had submitted on January 26th an offer of acceptance at a slightly lower value. Do you need a copy of the letter?
We're limited by our charter to convey the property from at less than 90%.
90%, right.
Of the value.
Right.
So if that is, if that is your offer of acceptance, then we're okay.
That is.
That's the price.
All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
All right, thank you. I think we're ready now for item PC-04-16. This is an ordinance of the mayor and city council of the city of North Miami, Florida, amending Chapter 29 of the North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled, Land Development Regulations, by amending Article 5, Division 16, entitled Standards for Specific Uses, specifically at Section 5-1608A1 entitled Room Additions to Residential Structures and Conversion of Garages or Carports to Living Space, to remove the maximum 250 square feet floor area limitation for home additions permitted with flat roofs, as long as said additions are located in the rear of the property and are not visible from any public right-of-way, providing for repeal, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for codification, and for an effective date. Staff report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to mention that this item, the text amendment, is actually sponsored by Councilman Galvin, and I'll read the recommendation into the record. Staff is recommending adoption of the proposed ordinance to amend Chapter 29 of the North Miami Code of Ordinances entitled Land Development Regulations, by amending the texts of Article 5, Division 16, Standards for Specific Uses, specifically at Section 5-1608, Room Additions to Residential Structures and Conversions of Garages or Carports to Living Spaces, to remove the maximum 250 square foot limit for home additions permitted with flat roofs, and forward said ordinance to the mayor and council for final consideration. Currently in Article 5, Division 16, Section 5-1608 of the code, there is a prohibition on room additions, and actually, the section says that pursuant to the provision in the LDR, additions are permitted under the following conditions. First, that it doesn't exceed 250 square feet. It has to be located in the rear of the property, and it must not be visible from the public right-of-way. The sponsor is requesting that restriction, that limits the bedroom additions to 250 square feet, be removed from the code. It's been in the code for the last 20 years, and there are property owners that have complained that bedroom additions that they've requested be exceeding the 250 square feet have been denied by our building department, and they consider it to be very restrictive and burdensome. So that's something that's been brought forward for consideration. It's an antiquated part of the code that really serves no purpose in today's architectural standards and in terms of someone looking to improve their property and have an additional quality of life within the city. So staff looked at the requests based on the criteria of Article 3, Division 10 of the LDR, and finds that it meets the criteria outlined in the code, and as such, staff is recommending approval of this text amendment at this time. Does the board have any questions for staff?
Any questions to my right, Mr. Ernst?
No, sir.
Mr. McDermid? Any questions? None? All right, Ms. Bulley?
No, sir.
All right. Mr. Emmanuel?
No, sir.
Mr. Pichon?
I just have one. When we take out the 250 square foot maximum, should there be some thought about replacing it with either another number or a percentage of the total square footage of the roof or something? Because now that's, there's no, there's no limit appears.
Correct. Staff did consider it as a part of our analysis, but every home is so different that it would really be arbitrary to come up with a fictitious number that's really not based on having an actual project before you with a total size. Each project has to be evaluated on a case-by-case basis, and it has to pass the merit of the building official and the building department in terms of its structural integrity, if it flows with the compatibility of the neighborhood, if it fits in with the architectural of the structure itself. So we believe that it needed to be dealt with on a case-by-case basis and not have just some random number stuck in the code, and back to where we are today with a 250 that you really couldn't quantify or justify in our code.
Would setback also come as a factor?
Absolutely. Absolutely. Setback would play a factor in the process of review process also.
Setback all the way around.
Correct. It's definitely prudent to treat it as an individual review and not use an arbitrary number to fit the entire city where bedroom additions are concerned.
All else remains the same. Setback requirements, it's going to consider certain variables, particular to that property, the lot size, the size, the square, you know, footage of the home. So it does consider each property uniquely, and if it could go beyond 250, so be it. And also a corner lot. It serves as an artificial limitation right now that has no merit, very little merit.
What's regards to a corner lot.
And scale, I mean, the scale of the property.
My backyard is exposed to a side, you know, I'm on a corner, so part of my backyard, let's say if I wanted to put an addition on, how would that play out as far as falling into whether or not that's following the guidelines of the ordinance, because of the fact that it says it can't be exposed to the street?
Uh-huh. So you would already fail the third criteria, because it cannot be visible from the public right-of-way. The way the code is written.
If you're a corner lot, you can't do it.
However, the issue here would be where the house faces. If the house faces the avenue and the addition is not visible from the avenue, you'd be a reasonable, you'd be a reasonable candidate, you see.
Correct. Because the issue is visibility from the public right-of-way.
See, where's the front door located in the...
And it's for a flat roof addition.
It says visible from any public right-of-way.
Right. That's what the ordinance says right now.
And there'd have to be an exemption allowed for corner lots, because of course you've got the side street that would be visible, and, you know, you can't lock a homeowner into the existing size as times and conditions warrant improving the house.
Are there any current applicants who have applied to add additions to their homes?
There actually have been several.
So have they been grandfathered?
All have been denied. They're denied. They're just prohibited. You can't do it.
So they can't come back within a certain amount of time once this is passed?
Not at all. Unless you pass it, it's not permissible. If it's passed, then they can apply.
Question to the city attorney. Can we author in an exception for corner lots that would address the visibility from the side street?
We would have to address that. We would have to look at that.
Or leave the language as stated.
And you could, you could make a recommendation that we can propose to consider corner lots as well.
The chair would certainly ask that the commission make a recommendation to take into consideration corner lots, because that would prohibit anybody with a corner lot, which generally is a larger lot size than the interior lots, from making any substantive improvement to their home. And we wouldn't want to exclude corner lots. I don't have a problem with lifting the 250-foot minimum. If somebody has the appropriate backyard and they can do a larger addition, to me, that's fine, but it does clearly disadvantage a corner lot, something that I think we never really considered when we drafted the original ordinance.
I don't think it disadvantages the corner lot any more than it currently does. It lifts the, it lifts the maximum, and if it's not visible from the public right-of-way, so be it. That's, that was the intention.
Yes, but you see, why would you, why would you prohibit an addition on a corner lot?
Why do you, why did you prohibit?
There seems to be no substantive reason for prohibiting a room addition. If someone wants to expand their home, reasonably, why not?
Then why not allow a flat roof on the front street?
Yes, on the front street, which would be the side where the front door is at.
It's visible from the public right-of-way. I'm not sure there's a distinction.
Well, I see a distinction on that.
I don't.
Well, I don't either, as to what, because of the fact that I have a corner lot. If I were to put, if I needed to put an addition on my house, in theory, the only area that I would be able to put it on would be on the side of the street side, not the avenue side. I live on a street and an avenue, so therefore, the only area I could put an addition on would be on that side of the street.
Your side, that would have been a rear yard.
So, you know, you're going to have cases, I think, where, damn it, if you do, then don't type situation.
You have to be about a case-by-case basis.
And so, and we don't have any defined language to address that, or whether or not we leave it up to staff.
If I may add in a next-on-city manner, I mean, the code doesn't prohibit, you know, addition per se, but flat roofs.
Right.
I mean, if you have an addition that is facing a right-of-way, therefore, you have to have the same roof line as your existing structure. So that, but then that will become cause prohibitive, that some advocates are complaining about.
Yes, that's just it. It becomes cause prohibitive if you already have, say, a trapezoidal hip roof, and now you put an addition on, how do you integrate that into the trapezoidal hip roof? The normal way to build on is with a flat roof.
Yeah.
You see, and a corner lot, that clearly creates a disadvantage under this ordinance as we're now reading it.
Well, then, Mr. Chairman.
Is there a motion?
May I be allowed to add language? I would say, with the exception of a corner lot, should it...
Well, I would defer to the city attorney first to see if he has a thought on this, and we would adopt it if he does. If not, I would, I would accept your recommendation. And we'll give him a moment to ponder the question.
Once again, it always seems like we put ourselves in this trap of language.
Yes, well, we seem to deal with a lot of these traps year over year. It's a good thing it's not waterfront.
So on page 2 of 4, where it says the requirements, your issue is the one that says it's not visible from a public right-of-way. Right. For a corner lot. Right, a corner lot, there's two right-of-ways. There's a street side and an avenue side. So by removing that, that particular requirement from a corner lot, then that removes the issue. I'm just trying to think of... Or could you just say except for corner lots, with the exception of corner lots? Would that be an easy fix to that?
Well, I understand where's, I, well, I understand what Scott is saying, and that if you're going to build an addition, you don't want it to exceed the sideline dimensions of the existing house. You want to put it behind the house.
The current ordinance, I think what Councilman Galvin objected to was the maximum 250 square feet.
Correct.
So the current ordinance says maximum of 250 square feet and not visible from a public right-of-way.
Correct.
So if we eliminate the 250-foot maximum, I think we've given him what he's asked for. And if we leave the public right-of-way prohibition in, we've left the ordinance there with the changes that were suggested.
So the appropriate, what you're recommending is leaving the language that not appears as stricken, followed by the comma, if not visible from a street frontage. You want that, you don't want that deleted, obviously. You want to leave that in there, and that would be applicable as long as...
Well, you want the existing lines of the house to be preserved, you see, and I can understand that, but I understand if Mr. Ernst wants to put an addition on his house, and maybe he's coming up on a 50-year expansion or, you know, 50-year reauthorization, and wants to do a nice addition off the back, it might be 300 or 400 square feet, but to do that, you'd have to build behind the house, which of course makes it a public view unless you conceal it artfully with hedge work, but then again, you're only allowed four feet of hedging on that kind of a situation, or, you know, and so you get into a whole series of complications that puts the corner owner in a distinct liability, if I want to, if[1797.33] if I wanna, if you want to call it that, or a disadvantage.
Which currently exists.
Yes, but, but should it exist? Is it right to disadvantage a corner property owner?
It strikes me as the idea was to keep flat roofs not visible from public rights of way. That was the point of the ordinance. And it included both streets and avenues.
But a point of fact, my house, my garage, is a flat roof. It is on the street side of North Miami Avenue. And that flat roof already exists. So, if I were to add on to that flat roof, another portion of the flat roof, I'm, I'm either, you know, I, I'm not breaking code because I'm just adding on to an existing flat roof. See, this is where, again, we always get trapped in language because we're not, we don't...
There, there, there needs to be an exception for the corner lot. Corner lot owners have to have some means to deal with this.
I'm just not sure whether it needs to be. There doesn't currently exist one.
Right.
And so, we're now introducing an exception where none exists.
Well, I think we have general agreement to waive the two hundred and fifty square foot. That, that's, that's simple.
And I really believe that that was the impetus for bringing this item here.
And we accept that.
It was that limitation. So, removing that limitation from, from this ordinance, I think you have liberated, uh, the property owners that basically attempted to come in and, and, and this, this limitation became a, a basis for denial.
All right, let's do it.
And that we're trying to remove that limitation.
Let's do it this way. Let's, let's adopt this as presented with a recommendation that staff come back to us with, with a, an amendment in a future time that would address the issue of corner lots.
I would think, let's not adopt it as presented and leave the language that cur- that was, that Mr. Galvin was after, change that language in the ordinance and adopt that.
Well, but that's what we're doing. If we adopt it as presented, we're accepting his change in, in, in language.
His, I, as I read it, his suggestion was to remove the limit of two hundred and fifty square feet.
To remove that.
That's what we're agreeing upon. We all agree upon that.
And you agree on that, right, to remove that?
Absolutely.
Well, so, we agreed to re- to do that, and we make a recommendation that staff revisit the issue of corner lots as this would affect them.
So, so we're gonna leave the ordinance as, as amended?
As amended for Mr. Galvin, yes.
With the recommendation that we look at, we will cross that bridge when we get there?
Yeah, I'll give you some, you know, three months, six months, come back with something, see if it addresses the, the, the disadvantage of a corner lot.
Of a corner lot, exactly. Thank you, sir.
Uh, because that's a question that is gonna come up sooner or later, and when it does, we're gonna have to go through this all over again.
This is a living document. We are capable of bringing back an amendment when needed. Yes, sir.
All right, all in favor? You have a question? Well, we haven't had a motion yet. All right, Mike moves to approve. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Manuel, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much. Tell Mr. Galvin that we have approved his request, and we'd like him to address the issue of the corner lot.
Mr., Mr. Chair, as a point of order, I'm not sure if you opened this for public hearing or not.
Oh, you're right, yes, we forgot to do that. Sorry about that. We all agreed, maybe the public didn't.
Do we have to withdraw the motion?
Uh, you can reentertain it if you have, let's see.
Let's, let's reopen the public hearing. All right, anybody wanting to speak to this, let's, let's hear it. If we overlooked that, we didn't mean to.
Yeah, we apologize. We'll reentertain if we have to.
Yes.
So, I'm not on a, I'm on a corner lot, but if I want to put a flat roof behind my house and I have the canal behind my house, which is a public right of way?
That's an interesting question. We don't know yet.
Yeah, just a thought, I'm not going over two hundred and fifty feet, but...
But you might.
Yeah, I might put an addition in the back of my house, and I might want a flat roof so I can walk out on my large sunroof in the back of my house now.
Yes, it could be quite nice, yes.
Are you making that illegal right now?
No, we're not making it illegal. It would never was necessarily. We'll address that, and we'll try to get staff to come back to us with something. Because we recognize that the corner guy is at a certain disadvantage here. Uh, by the way, sir, would you come up and state your name and address for the record? I mean, we're kind of doing this backwards, I realize, but we need to...
I'm sorry, my name's Dan Ward. I'm at twenty-one ninety-seven Northeast one hundred and twenty-third Street. And my concern was there's a public right of way behind my house, the canal.
Right.
And if I wanted to, I'm an Audi, we'll say, towards the av- towards the street, one hundred and twenty-third Street. If I wanted to extend my property to butt up against my neighbors and I wanted a flat, say, sun deck and just be able to walk out of my balcony and put furniture...
It's an interesting question because the way this was written, it, it didn't take into consideration waterways. It took into consideration regular streets and avenues.
If I could clarify, Mr. Chair, Article seven of the code does define your right of way as land area. It's your street right of way. It doesn't include waterways. It makes a distinction between waterways and right of way.
At this point, waterways are not covered, so you're, we're okay on that. All right, go ahead. Yes.
Good evening, Kevin Burns, twenty-sixty-five Alamanda Drive. Finally, after twenty years, we're addressing this, and I commend, uh, Mr. Galvin for, uh, bringing it forward. But you, as the planning commission, he is looking, and I'm sure the council is looking for you, to you, for guidance since you're making recommendations. Um, I think you, uh, as Charles, uh, had said, should make the recommendation now. Don't put it off for three months. There's only two types of residential properties. You either are an interior lot or you're the corner lot. It's, there is no other. Why would you automatically discriminate against the corner lots? Charles, your house, exactly. Uh, many houses have enclosed their carports, but you want to expand. Why should he not be able to expand onto his just because he happens to be on a, a large corner lot? You can very simply address it and make this a recommendation to the council, to Mr. Galvin, um, to accept your recommendation that there is no, uh, limit whether you're on the, uh, corner lot or you're the regular, uh, lot. And let the council make that decision. Secondly, um, if somebody has a flat roof and they want to do the, uh, addition, they should be able to, um, replace the roof and make it in, um, the rest of the house, as you were talking about, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, of, if you have a tile roof, if you have some other type of roof, to blend it all, uh, together if you're doing a, an addition. And so, we should not even have the restriction that it has to only be a, a, a flat roof. Uh, and as Mr. Ernst has said, we're always boxing ourselves in and limiting people's ability to do what is modern architecture, what is of today's standards. And let's not pigeonhole the city and to try and to dictate to everybody exactly how they have to design their house and not design it. And again, somebody like Mr. Ernst shouldn't be penalized because they happen to have, uh, they live on a, a corner lot. And you know, these things don't come around very often, they get reviewed. So, let's, uh, you're, you're reviewing it. Getting away with the two hundred and fif- doing away with the two hundred and fifty feet is, is, is great. And don't make an, don't, don't limit it or, or cause a, a burden to the, uh, corner lots. And if the council doesn't like it, and if Mr. Galvin doesn't like it, he will address it. But at least it's recommendations, positive recommendations that are coming from this board because you are the ones who see, see this in front of you all the time. You're the planning commission, you see the nuances, and you see where the, the codes, uh, are, are faulty. And, you know, so you have this ability in front of you now, and I think you should take advantage of it. Uh, do away with the, uh, two hundred and fifty feet. Doesn't have to be a flat roof. And, uh, allow a, a corner lot to have the same rights as any other house that's in the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Kevin. Does anyone else wish to speak to this? We have one more person, come on up.
My name is, uh, Mike Moskew. I live at two-two-one-five-and-a-half Northeast one-twenty-third in the townhomes. Um, we always get forget- uh, forgotten in these kinds of things because we are, uh, single-family homes. We are not an association. And I have entertained the thought for a while because my house has a setback to build out my kitchen into my own front courtyard. And it would be at half height and then open up a second stair bedroom so that there would be a balcony. That does not fit into anything that you've talked about tonight.
Right, that's not a factor because the build-out would not likely alter your setback. As long as you have to, you have to comply with your setbacks. But you, but having said that, you can build up to that setback limit.
Okay.
That's not gonna be a factor here in this case. There may be other issues that may come up, but as long as you comply with the setback, this isn't going to affect you.
Just wanted to get the townhouses in there.
This, the townhouses are, it's, you're, you're, we all have setbacks. And as long as we don't exceed or encroach on the setback, we're fine.
Thank you.
Yeah. All right, anyone else? Last call, anyone else? No, public hearing is closed. All right, so now, gentlemen, we, we've heard this before. We need to reconsider initially at least. Uh, we all support removing the two hundred and fifty square foot liability, and we do have this technical issue of how to address a corner lot. Corner lots are rather unique. People usually have more square footage, they usually pay a little more in taxes, and they seem to have restrictions that put them as somewhat of a disability if they choose to enhance their property. Chair is open to recommendations from any member of the commission. If not, we would recommend to Mr. Galvin and to the city council that they review the issue of corner lots when they approve this ordinance.
Well, again, Mr. Chairman...
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Ernst.
I'm, I'm looking for specific language, um, as one of the speakers.
And I think we all are.
Yeah, and, and I, I've, I, I would hope maybe staff can, can, uh, assist us with, uh... I could suggest only that we say with the exception of corner lots, sightlines may not, the, the issue of sight, um, would not apply to corner lots.
We could, we could waive the sightline issue as to corner lots. See what that does.
Would that be a, a way of, in a, in a recommendation?
Does that work or does that open another Pandora's box?
No, no, no.
No, no.
Only what we're talking about in the language. In other words, we want the language in there that allows a corner lot to do it and be within the law and not break the law by exposure to one side, one street or the other street. In other words, he's, he's following the guidelines as though he were an owner not on a corner, but then he's breaking the law because, in, in effect, that, that addition is now seen from a second, secondary artery.
Unless we were to consider, think about this for a minute. We were to consider the sightline as being governed by the location of the front door.
I don't know why that...
No, that one doesn't either.
No.
It doesn't work either because the front door is not a part of the secondary, the other street, the corner street.
Right, which would take the side street out of consideration.
So, you can do anything on a side street?
Yeah, that's another way of saying it. Yes, Mr. McDeermade.
I'm through you to coun- council. Council? Um, earlier, we had a motion that was passed by the board. Um, now, do we need to go back? Because what Mr. Ernst is saying really modifies that particular motion. Do we need to go back?
Reconsider it, yes, vote on a reconsideration and then propose a new...
If we can get to that new proposal, yeah.
Right, if you can get to it. Otherwise, the previous one stands.
Can that be in one motion?
Well, it's not complicated. If we read a language, then we can reconsider.
Okay.
You know, question is, can we agree to, can we make a recommendation on language? If we can, then we reconsider the motion and we amend it.
I would, I think we all agree that we want to lift the maximum two hundred and square feet.
Right, that, that word read out.
We passed that already.
So, let's agree on that. Leave everything else alone and tell people to come back and talk to us about avenues and streets.
Well, that was the original motion.
Give it some thought.
No, we want to, we want to... Where I disagree with you on that.
We give it some thought, probably gonna prolong.
Let's have one, one person at a time. Mr. Pinchon, finish your statement.
Well, that was my statement.
Okay, then.
I think we, that we met the councilman's request.
Right, we have.
Right, which we did.
Which we've done. And then we started tinkering with it because we, we know better. So, why don't we meet the councilman's request and leave the motion, leave the ordinance alone and send it back with a suggestion that there be some consideration about right of way on streets that the house doesn't face?
It's possible. Ms. Belay, I, I know you have some doubts, go ahead, speak them.
I, I sympathize with you. I mean, if I had a corner lot, if I, if I had a corner lot, I would definitely want my home, the language in, in this, um, in this, in this, um, ordinance to apply to my, to my home. So, I don't know, I, I don't think we should just rule out the, the, um, the two fifty. Yes, we all agree to, uh, remove the two fifty from the language, but, um, the corner lots do pose an issue in this, um, in the language here, so why not address it now? Or bring forward some recommendations, some concrete recommendations that the board can review versus just saying, oh, we'll come back to it at a later date. But what happens in, let's say, a couple of weeks or a month or so, and someone with a corner lot has this concern, what do we do then?
Well, I think, I think hopefully, if that happens, someone would have given it some consideration and walked in here with some ideas about it. But the ideas, the conversation was all about the maximum size allowable.
But ideas...
And we're, we're throwing this side street thing in to change the ordinance very capriciously, without any consideration.
Okay, well, ideas and something being written in black and white are two different things. So, we can't, we can't go off ideas if someone has a concern that arises that applies to what we just brought up.
Yeah, the way I, I view this, it's not really capricious. We've identified a fly in the ointment. And now, we're trying to find a way to extricate the fly and spread the ointment around to resolve the problem without it become, coming back. Because what'll happen, the corner lot will apply and it'll automatically be denied, and it'll never get to us for review until you've had multiple denials and somebody goes to city council and then they, it goes through the chain and it comes all the way back to us when we possibly could, could come up with a proposal tonight that might resolve this, possibly.
Well, I agree with you wholeheartedly, Mr. Chairman, that we address it tonight and get it done and down in writing. And, and so, again, I'd like the staff to kind of finalize the language in allowing for an exception for a corner li- lot when it comes to only, to the, the portion of the ordinance, uh, that addresses the site qualifications. So, all we're, all I'm asking, and maybe others on the council are asking, let us put some language in that addresses a corner lot and, and the, and the issue of sight, uh, of sightlines. Being allowed because of the fact that it can be seen from...
Yes, when this was written, nobody was thinking of corner lots. It just wasn't a factor twenty years ago.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, uh, council, Commissioner McDeermade.
Yeah, so basically, what I think, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, is that you're just looking to put in except for not visible from any public right of way. Um, you know, um, you know, excluding corner lots, basically.
Well, we're, we're trying to, to make an, an ex- an allowance for corner lots to be expanded, for the corner physical structure to be enlarged in a way that would not create another violation of an ordinance.
That's what the issue is being...
Well, I'm, I'm waiting for, for staff. If I make a recommendation, um, we, we bring back, uh, the language, if not visible from a street frontage, well, we, it will include in parentheses, except for corner lots.
Yeah, that's what I said.
All right, that would be fine.
So, so what it's doing is, is except, accepting that requirement
So, so what it's doing is, is accept, accepting that requirement will no longer apply to corner lots. Let us bring back. We understand your, your concern. I, I think I can draft something that really addresses your concern, that, that can then go, move forward to council for approval. And now we've covered not only the two hundred and fifty-five, you know, square feet requirement, re- limitation, but also we will address fully your, your, your corner lots.
If it's parentha- parenthesized, as you said, then it becomes, that's the only text, text change that we would need to make.
Exactly.
So what is the la- what is then the language?
Well, this is a proposal to, uh, amend.
This was not, the corner lot was not a scope of the request, so we need to incorporate it as such.
Right.
So, so that it makes sense, so that it, it, they both pass.
Right.
It addresses the concerns, immediate concerns of some property owners that are being prohibited from expanding their, their properties, and then it will also take care of the future, uh, applicants that live on, uh, corner lots as well. We can come up with some language, trust me.
So your, your suggestion that we just put in parentheses, exception, with the exception of corner lots?
Exactly, so that, so that limitation is not imposed, the visibility requirement is not applied to corner lots. Well, would that work?
I can live with that, that's for sure.
Does that not then say, I can put a flat roof on the front of my house if I live on the corner?
No.
No.
No, that's not quite what it's saying.
It's not.
Except for corner lots.
No, on the sight limitations, not visible from the front of the house, except for corner lots.
Not visible from any public right of way.
The sponsor. Uh, the, the scope that you're now covering was not contemplated by the sponsor, so, um, we can keep it as is and bring it back to cover the corner lots, or we would have to go back and convince the sponsor that this is part, I mean, this would be a requirement.
So it'd only be a recommendation.
So it would be a recommendation.
All right, we recommend that an exception be carved out for corner lots.
Okay.
All right, fine. How about that? We make a recommendation that we carve out an exception for corner lots and ask the sponsor to consider that.
Exactly.
I'm fine with that.
All right, so.
I move then, may I?
For that recommendation.
So you would reconsider your, your prior decision, reconsider it.
Right.
And then go ahead and move forward with the new recommendation.
All right, the chair calls for motion to reconsider.
So move.
So move, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Reconsideration. You now have a recommendation to make.
I, I recommend that we, um, except, I recommend that we, um, add the language of, uh, with the exception of corner lots as discussed, uh, with council, and they will forward it on to the city commission.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, very good. Move that past. Thank you. Good luck with that. I know Mr. Galvin has the best interest of all our homeowners at heart. And I'm certain that he'll give that very serious consideration. Oh, and now we get to the item that everybody is waiting for. Yes, yes, the. Yeah, the chair will be in recess for five. This is likely to be an interesting evening, so this is your time to make the, uh, visit facilities.